Requirements provided for in the open public meetings act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Sun, and the Two of Her Times, and by posting at the Middletown Town to Municipal Building and filing with the Township Clerk on January 7th, 2023. Miniman Clark. Miniman Kratz.
Here.
Miniman Sedambrino. Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have certificates of appreciation proclamations. Our first presentation is recognizing Middletown High School North ice hockey team for winning NJSIAA Public B State Championship. At this time, I'd like to invite the Middletown North hockey coaches and team to please join Mayor Perry at the front of the room.
Good evening, everybody. It's great to see everyone, and it's great to have our state champion, the North hockey team here tonight. I think it was the last meeting that we were at, and I'm getting texts and phone calls from people saying, "All right, game's almost done, tight." Not going to be any questions. Because they just, because North had just won as I'm walking into this room two weeks ago, right? And I said, "I'm going to get there in time for all those fire engines to come down, come down Tyndall." So I'm sitting here, I get a question, another question, I said, "I'm never making it." But Don knew, so Don Watson said, "All right, I'm going to end real quick, because I know everybody wants to get over there and celebrate North's victory." And we got over to High School North, and we woke up Middletown to, well, I see one of our fire chiefs here, but we woke up Middletown for a great celebration and one that all of you should be really, really proud of, and that is a great state championship. Last year, I go up to the Prudential Center in a heartbreaker. So I know I'm not allowed to be there. It's not the curse. But I met you at North, and we got to celebrate, and I was just honored to be there with you guys. The energy, the vibe, after the Mayor's Cup, North taking that victory, coming back, coming together, and winning that state championship, bam, that feels good, right? So let's give a big round of applause to these guys. You know, it's been a lot of fun that when we first got into this building, we had a couple of state championships, and then all of a sudden, Middletown was the powerhouse for sports. And Middletown North Hockey has been there, has come back, took home that trophy, and now Middletown is so proud of you, as you know. You've been seeing it all over the place. So tonight, we wanted to honor you, we wanted to thank you for all the energy that you brought Middletown and for bringing home that trophy, and running it back next year. So congratulations, guys. Well, very well. We have certificates for all of you, and I'll give them to your folks to hand out. But I think we're going to take a quick picture of where you are. There you are. Come on down. Yeah, yes. Well, I wouldn't sign on purpose. All right, and then I know that all moms and dads and everybody want to come up. The one rule.
Great. Perfect. Congratulations, and everyone.
All right, hang on, Mr. Cullen's here. Mr. Cullen, come on down. Get it, get it. You know, Mr. Cullen says to me, you know, "I helped bring this championship here. My first year as principal." I'm like, "Oh, boy, here we go." All right, guys. Thanks, Mr. Perry.
All right. Yes, I am. It's not a classroom, but I was. Unless you are, please do not feel like you have to say unless you need some type of government. I am happy to take a one-minute recess. Okay, Heidi.
We have proclamations for the record tonight. A proclamation recognizing April 2023 as Alcohol Awareness Month in the Township of Middletown. A proclamation recognizing April 2023 as Autism Awareness Month in the Township of Middletown. A proclamation recognizing April 23rd as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the Township of Middletown. A proclamation recognizing April 2023 as Donate Life Month in the Township of Middletown. And proclamation recognizing April 2023 as National Volunteer Month in the Township of Middletown. Our next item, we have approval of minutes for February 21st, 2023, regular meeting and the March 6th, 2023 workshop meetings.
Motion to approve. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes.
Heidi, one second.
Sure.
Are all of you doing a project? Okay. There's copies of the agenda if you don't have them already, right over there, so if you want to follow along. See them right on there? You're all writing very quickly, and it's all, Heidi types it out all for you. All right, so just so you know, we just approved number eight, which is the approval of minutes, all right? All right, you're welcome.
Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have introduction of proposed ordinances. Ordinance 2023-3366, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 355-10 and 11 of the Code of the Township of Middletown governing skate park rules and regulations.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held April 3rd, 2023. Our next ordinance for introduction, we have 2023-3367, an ordinance for calendar year 2023 to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank per NJSA4A: 4-45.14.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held April 3rd, 2023. At this time, I'd like to ask the Township Committee to adopt a consent agenda, which will include Resolutions 23-103 through 23-114, including firefighter application for Graham Schuman of River Plaza Fire Company.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve a consent agenda. Now we have Township Committee comments.
Miniman Clark.
I'm going to hold all my comments except for congratulating North on their state championship. It's awesome. I had the privilege of being a state champion at Middletown High School South in 1992, and it's pretty awesome, so.
All right, thank you, Miniman Clark. Miniman Kratz.
I'd like to echo the same sentiments and offer my congratulations to the hockey team at North. It was a big win for them and exciting to have them here as always. Just a reminder that March 31st is the deadline that Social Services is accepting donations for Easter baskets, so if anyone would like to contribute, they can reach out to Social Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Miniman Kratz. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, congratulations, South.
North.
I'm sorry, North.
Sorry.
Jesus. I apologize. Very exciting night. These group of guys smelled a little bit different tonight.
Smelled good. Tony and I got the opportunity, thanks again, Don, for getting over there, and it was just an amazing night, just to feel what they felt that night, all super excited, just a great, great time. I want to thank Principal Whitman from River Plaza for allowing me to come in and read to the second grade class. That was a good time as well, to read some tongue twisters, which was good. That's all I have, Mayor.
I picked out the book.
Yes, you did.
Just, uh, I have no comments other than, once again, congratulations to North. We'll open it up for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment may do so by stepping forward. Joe will bring up the microphone in a second. We ask that you just state your name and address for the record, and that you keep your comments to five minutes, at four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. Any of you ladies like to make a comment or ask a question? No? Are you sure? Okay. All right. Yes. Just your name and address.
Hi, I'm Kate McCarron, and I'm married to Joe Julian. We live at 129 Mohawk Avenue in Atlantic Islands, but we're still technically Middletown.
You are.
We are, oddly enough. Both properties are Atlantic Islands, but we're part of Middletown. I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but we missed the meeting on Thursday for the Route 36 corridor redevelopment. We wanted to know if there was anywhere specific that we should give our feedback to.
We're going to, that's just the first of many conversations that are happening. The redevelopment meeting that we had of Route 36, you can actually go back and watch it, we recorded it if you haven't already, but there will be a series of public meetings that will happen before anything is done on Route 36 in terms of redevelopment plans that you'll be able to provide any feedback.
Perfect. Yeah, I know. We just recently, Mr. Julian Senior passed away two years ago. We just finally are getting to the point of actually inheriting the property, so now we're really excited.
I didn't know that's what you were with, so we should probably schedule a special meeting directly with you guys, because your property's so different than everything else.
We have some big plans.
You have some interesting.
We have some really great, big plans that we want to do.
We'll set up a meeting with you, but in the meantime, if you had comments, you can always send them into the planning department.
Okay, I'll email you.
Laura will give you her card, and we'll get in contact with you and schedule something up so that at least you can sit down with Tony and our planning department.
Yeah, because we have a lot of things we want to do, and you know, we have a lot of hurdles.
Nope. Yes.
Awesome.
Yep, great. We'll work on it.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, John, come on down.
John Spinelli, 91 Burlington. I just had a question, kind of like proposal idea for the Township Committee about the circus liquor's redevelopment. I'm sure, I guess, everyone knows the film industry is becoming, it looks like it's on the rise in New Jersey, especially in Middletown, with more films coming out, and I just had an idea, like, wanted to share, perhaps, since the plan was done a couple years ago and some things have changed, perhaps of trying to recruit, like, I know it's a huge process, but perhaps the idea of trying to get like a filming company or filming studio to try to, you know, if they might be interested in that land, as a, you know, I think it just might be a win-win situation where it would be, if instead of a strip mall, it could possibly be less traffic going into that commercial area. They could probably use some of the forest there for filming instead of getting a permit if a company wanted to deal with the park system, Monmouth County Park system, or, it's just, it's just an idea I had, and I wanted to share with the Township Committee what about your thoughts on it.
It's a great idea, John, honestly. I wish I could steal Netflix from Fort Monmouth, that'd be nice. But you're absolutely right. Middletown, it has become quite a hub for filming. Just ask Modern Day right now how that's going, but.
A little chaotic there right now, but.
It is, but, you know, it's exciting, because when you pass by and you see that Tina Fey, and you see that all these celebrities are coming to your town, and they're filming here at the old Modern Day High School, between that, between George Colbert's production of Miranda's Victim, which has now been, is about to be in its second film festival down in Tampa Bay this week, when you look at Clerks 3, that was here, you know, and talk about an OG film from Middletown, you know, you get excited about all the things that you're seeing down at the co-op, down areas all across Middletown, and our parks that they're utilizing for the filming industry, and I'm very happy at the success, you know, that this has brought to, not Middletown, but our small businesses, because it's our small businesses that are catering every single day. It's local people who are building the sets and breaking down the sets. These are all, you know, it's local people who are, you know, potentially in these movies. So it is a, it's a great idea, and if you know any Hollywood execs that would like to talk to a small-town mayor, I'm more than happy to talk to them. But no, it's a great idea, John.
You know, I was just going to say, like, it also, if there was like a central location, it could bring more jobs to Middletown, but obviously, it's a little bit of a challenge to do, but just, I just thought it might be maybe a little bit better than perhaps like a strip mall or something, you know, something new on that area, but I just wanted to share.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, John. All right. Yes, sir.
Circa, 10 Wealthy Avenue, Middletown. So I'm here tonight with, well, we, I'm here with a group of people back there against the wall.
They don't want to stand up because they felt like they were underdressed, just for the record earlier, but they had just come from the tennis court, so it's okay.
Yeah, so you gave it away already. So I've been having a problem over at Tyndale Park. I put it all on paper just so I wouldn't forget anything, so bear with me, it's under five.
Go ahead.
So I got details, I won't miss it. All right. So, like I said, I'm here to bring to the committee's attentions. My efforts have a broken net post replaced at Tyndale Park Tennis Courts. I feel it's important to tell you about my experience during the last three-month-long process before I talk about the repair itself. I first contacted Gollivide on November 7th last year about the post. He left a message acknowledging my call and said that he would get a look at it. In the meantime, I temporarily repaired the post so it could use the court. I didn't know how long it would take until anything was done, so I went ahead and fixed it. Then, nothing was done for two and a half months, until at one point, we realized the net had been taken down. So I spoke to Mr. Levite again on January 20th, and he said that he got a look at it, and the net was removed due to safety concerns. He would not give a timeframe on when the repair would be done, stating that it is not a simple repair because of the weather. Because of the weather, weather's been fine, I don't know why that would matter. Made no sense to me. So we went from a fully functioning net, just like any other, to two posts standing alone, waiting for someone to run into them. So, moving on, February 15th, I filed an online contact form directed to DPW since I learned that Mr. Levite was no longer with the town. There was no response. On February 23rd, I filed another contact form, this time directed to the town committee, and I received a prompt reply saying it would be forwarded to DPW. I then received an email from Ted Maloney a few days later saying that renovations will possibly be beginning late summer, and that he couldn't justify spending, quote, "significant dollars" to do a temporary repair. So just quickly, the repair, this is where the problem may be coming from. The post is in a ground sleeve. This particular post, I checked, I could just slide it right out of the ground. The repair just involves new post, slide it in the ground, put a new net up, or the old net up that was taken down, but a previous repair that had been done on another court, they had cut the asphalt out, jackhammered the cement out, put a new post in, cemented it, very expensive and labor-intensive task. So at this point, I wanted to speak to Mr. Maloney, just maybe clear this up. So on February 27th, I left a voicemail. I didn't get a response on March 1st, sent an email, I didn't get a response. All along, while trying to contact DPW, as I said, I just wanted to speak to someone and clear up what was involved in the repair. I understand that renovations are coming, and you can't spend a lot of money, but this is a very small amount, I estimate $250, and I have some documentation here if anyone needs to see it. So that brings us to where we are now, coming to a town meeting with nine or 10 of us back there, just to get what we see done as simple maintenance and basic repair. So what do we want? We're simply asking to have one broken post replaced, that's all. It's unbelievably frustrating that we have to come to a town meeting to try to get it done. These courts are in high demand by residents, Middletown North tennis teams, and Middletown's tennis programs for kids. In the summer, there's often not enough courts to meet the demand. This court has worth far more to the community than the $250 it would cost to put it back in use. Even if renovations begin in late summer, which I doubt, we strongly disagree with the town stance that the use of this court by the community is not worth $250. So I think I covered everything I needed to say about it.
Okay. Ted?
So I apologize, I didn't get your last voicemail, but I know I did respond to you on an email back in February, and I did, I spoke to Mr. Levite about it back in January, and he gave me the cost of replacing that, and it's not really as simple as just putting a new post over that sleeve. It does have to be cut out, like the other one was done, saw cut, removed, excavated, a new post, and new concrete. The price he got for that work was over $1,000 to do it, which, you know, is significant, and if we were going to keep the courts there without touching them for a while, that's probably what we would do.
Ted, why do we need to remove, what's the rationale behind digging out it and putting a new concrete and a new sleeve down there?
Because when you have a new post, first of all, the post that is there now is sitting on a, sitting over a pipe, it's like a filler that's in there, holding it, and it feels pretty secure when you're out there, but with the tension on the net, and if somebody, you know, even if the net does hold, it's not meeting the spec of the actual post, and if somebody goes to step over the net, pushes down on the middle, it could snap, and somebody could technically get hurt. So we're not, it really has to be, if we're going to replace it, it has to be done properly for safety reasons, and that's what we talked about back in January. So if that is going to cost $1,000, you know, it's, we have a whole plan to not just, you know, we're not just going to resurface the courts in our new plan, we're going to actually mill them down, repave them, new fencing, new post all around. It just doesn't make sense right now for that, to put that money into that court when we're going to be doing this very soon, we're going to be getting new plans in from the engineer probably later this week. So there's a whole project, and, you know, and I know it's important, it's important to have access to that court, but the committee and the township is going to invest a significant amount of money to improve all those locations. but the, the committee and the township is gonna invest a significant amount of money to improve all those, all those locations there, all those courts.
I just respond to you on that?
Sure.
I, that's why I wish I had the opportunity to just speak to you. Yes, you saw, or I'm sorry, did you say you looked at her?
I looked at it.
Okay. So that piece of pipe sticking out of the ground when you pulled the post off, that's the temporary repair I made, it was functioning. But below that, the pipe that I put in there is the broken off piece, the original post. I was able just to slide that out by hand. There is a sleeve and the asphalt are made to be removable. A new post of the proper size, two and seven eighths diameter is made to slide right into that hole. There's no excavating, no concrete needed. If you'd like to meet me out there, I have pictures also.
Yeah, I would and I'm, and I'm not an expert, obviously, in, in tennis court posts, but I know we had a contractor out there who gave us the price and gave us the recommendation to, to, to replace that. That was, that was his information he gave us.
Ted, want, just want, would Tom, myself and you just go out there? I'll take a look at it myself. Hang, hang on, you could only, only one person at a time. Let's just take a look at it and, and then let's, we'll, we'll match that up with the comparison to the construction. Because I also don't wanna waste the summer for, for the folks that are playing tennis out there, the spring and the summer. If, you know, i- if it's $1,000, you know, we'll find, we'll, we'll, we'll find $1,000. Is that all right, Colleen? She didn't give me a yes or no for the record on that one. But let me, let me, let me just, hang on. I, I understand, but only one person can speak for the record at the, at a time, okay? So let, let's just, uh, well, Laura, can you grab Tom's contact information and then I'll meet you out there? All right? Laura's right there, right there. Okay. Just come up to the mic and, name and address.
Blake Drummond, I live at 252 Navisink Avenue, Atlantic Islands also, but also Middletown. Yeah, we did bring the first singles player from North today and seeing the North hockey team up here reminded us that the facility that the North boys tennis team has to play on is subpar. So that's one of the reasons we're also here to support that team and give those, that team all the advantages that they should be given.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no doubt they're, they're gonna have an unbelievable facility once it's, once it's completely renovated. But I, I don't see, you know, if, I, understanding and Janet Delitt, our recreation director, is not here tonight, but understanding how heavily used and how few tennis courts we do have in town, I, I think we can try and figure out a temporary solution for the time being. All right? Okay. Any of my other tennis folks back there that wanna speak on this issue? Nope? No? Okay. Yes? Okay.
John Sutton, 97 Palmer Street, Belford. Just a question about the renovations that are proposed for the court, have they reached the engineering phase?
I'm sorry?
Have they been given, like, are we, are we at an engineering state? Like, are we, has it been, do we have plans?
Yes.
So, and, and has any, has any of the monies that were donated, have we started the process? Like, where are we at with that?
Are you, are you, are you offering any cash?
We, we could definitely raise some, I'm sure we could.
What, what, I don't know what you mean by donated funds.
There was a $250,000 grant. It was dedicated. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah. Here, here's the problem though, the taxpayers of Middletown send millions of dollars to the county and we get $250,000 back.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I understand.
Believe me, it's, it's charity for other towns.
I, I understand.
The money is all in place and we're getting ready to go out the bid, you know, in a couple, couple of weeks.
Okay.
No, no, nothing stops it from, from here other than just putting it out the bid.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much, guys.
Okay. Going once, going twice tennis. You're welcome. And with a little bit of tennis, you can buy all your alcohol at Gateway Liquor.
That's right. Mark Saprowski, 38 Powell, two items. One, I wanna get a follow-up on this drainage easement in my yard that we've been going on for a couple of years because I sent an email out and I haven't gotten a response. What's the timeline?
To me?
I sent it to Ted. I sent one in November, he said we should have an answer by February, so I sent him one in March, find, try to find out what's the timeline here.
I think you were, you might have seen the map there last week when they were doing, they were televising the, the pipe. I don't know if you were out there or if we were out there with a camera.
No, I, I don't have any update of what's going on with anything. I'd like to be in the loop with it a little bit.
A road superintendent, they were out there maybe a week or so ago televising the inside of that pipe with, with T and M Associates. So they're, they're still working on the design plans for it, but that's gonna be a part of the capital for this year that's coming up in the spring. So it's, it's definitely, it's on our list, it's still being in design. They want to see some more of the, of the condition of the existing pipe. As far as the easement goes, that'll be done as we go forward to, to extend your easement through the whole property. But the pipe is actually in design now with T and M.
So is there a timeline of when that might be taking, when the construction might start?
Well, we have to do a capital ordinance. The design, the, the design funding is in place, the construction funding is not yet in place, that'll be on the upcoming ordinance.
Which is when?
I don't know yet, we're gonna do that.
Usually, it's, you, normally after the budget is over, after the budget's been completed. So the, the municipal operating budget is separate from the capital budget. So we, we anticipate, you know, next meeting, Colleen, for the, for, for the introduction of the.
So realistically, when do you think it would, would it start before the summer?
Summertime, it'll be summertime.
Okay. Second item. Same, same street, right across the street, there's been a vacant house there for five years, more than five years. I've, I've talked to the building department, the code enforcement, everything else, because the doors are wide open.
You're talking about the one with the roof?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. 39 Powell. And code enforcement basically told me, sorry, there's nothing I can do about this. And there's, I can see it, kids walking down the street, they walk into that house because it's wide open and has been for years. They don't mow the lawn, there's no code enforcement on that. So my neighbor and I'll go over and mow the lawn down and knock the trees out just because it looks like who did it and ran. And who, who do I go to about this to get this taken care of? Because if I had something wrong with my yard, code enforcement would be there, hey, you gotta get this taken care of. There's nothing being done with this place and it's wide open, which is a hazard to all of us around there.
I don't know if it, has that made our foreclosure list yet?
It will be. I, I don't know, I can't remember the status of that one specifically, whether it's still, there's still anybody paying taxes on it. We have, we have a lot of vacant properties around town and they're hard to track down because sometimes they go back to the, to like a bank or a mortgage company and we have to chase them down, try to get them to do whatever needs to be done.
So can somebody board it up at least? I mean, it's wide open.
We can, we can, we can work on either boarding it up or explore, you know, the potential to.
It's actually a hazard because that hasn't had a roof on it since I've been there. Since 2011, it hasn't had a roof, they've had a tarp over it. And I'm sure the floor is in that place, somebody, kid goes in there, they can get killed.
Is it, is it, Tony, with this property, I mean, it is, you know, when I was at Mark's house, you know, I, I looked at this property as well. But I'm wondering, i- is this a property if, that, that would qualify for us placing a lean against it and knocking it down?
It, it definitely could. There, there's a procedure we have to go through that takes.
Sure.
A couple of months.
I'm just putting it on the record that it is a hazard and one of these kids that goes walking through there is potentially going to get hurt.
38.
39.
Oh, 39.
39.
But let, let's see, I mean, we, we just did this just recently on another house that had caught fire some time ago and we, we knocked it down and placed a lean up against the house. So, you know, it, it's not something that I, I love doing because it.
It's been like, it's been like this since, I mean, even when the people lived there, it was a disaster.
Yeah, but ju- just so you know and kind of understand is that there's a potential that the town never gets its money back either. So we're spending money on something that we may never see our money back for.
I just, I just looked it up and this is one that, again, it's, it's, they're not paying taxes now, it'll probably wind up being a foreclosure. But the, the people who owned it left.
I remember.
Mail is no longer being delivered there.
Yeah. Oh, I knew the people that lived there.
I know, yes, but nobody knows where they are.
Yeah.
And so it's not a bank even that we can go after. These are the really tough ones. Leave the banks if we hassle them enough, they'll eventually come out.
You send, you send a summons to the CFO and they get really irritated and they send a company out to go mow the lawn.
Right. No.
Probably will have to pursue this one and.
So we'll, we'll, we'll place it, we'll work to place it on the foreclosure list.
And if I could get updated on the pipe status with, you know, get included on these emails.
Ted, can you have Ian call?
Or something this way. My wife wants to plant a garden in the front of there and she's like, can I plant it? I said, I don't want you to go wasting your time planting this garden if they're gonna come here and tear it up.
I know, it goes, it goes right through your garden.
It goes right through, which I, it's, it's okay, I'm willing to sacrifice a year, but if she plants everything and you come and tear it up.
Yeah, it, it's risky to do that right now, but I'll, I'll, I'll give you a couple.
Just so we have an idea of what's, you know, where we're standing.
Like I said, your email coincided with them going out there, so I thought you were talking to them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not there during the day, so.
Okay. I'll, I'll get your status.
Don't leave a business card in the door or anything.
Yeah, well, they were, they were only in the streets, so, yeah, but I'll, I'll have them, I'll get the status from, from them and let you know.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thanks, Mike. Any other member of the public wish, yep, Bruce, come on down.
Bruce Stafford, 39 Brainard, Port Monmouth. I apologize to the rest of the committee because I'm probably gonna be repeating some of the things that I had said March 6th in the absence of Ted. So I'm hoping Ted can answer some of these questions I have. Ted, in the Middletown minutes, what does it actually mean when they say that they're gonna have the slide gates in the spring mode until further notice?
You're talking about the, the big slide gate on.
Slide gates by the marina.
So the spring mode means that it, it'll close during the high, as the tide comes in and the pumps will be activated if necessary and then it'll open up when the differential between the two tides allows the water to drain from the, from the creek.
So the verbiage until further notice could mean one tide, correct?
It could be, yeah. What they usually do is they do it through a, through the storm event. Once the storm goes through, they, they turn it back to regular.
Okay. While we're on that subject, we had a storm on March 3rd. Middletown minutes indicated that the slide gates were closed and for the first time, it also annotated that the valve on Wilson was open. Is that correct?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I think so too. Here was the problem. Department of Environmental Protection, based on the storm that they scheduled for the 3rd, they reopened the slide gates on the 4th, which was the morning of Saturday. Now, for the benefit of everybody else here, when I say local mode for the valve on Wilson Avenue, that means the valve is in the open position, cannot close until they put it in the remote position. That valve on Wilson Avenue never seen the remote position until Monday afternoon.
Right.
Right.
Monday, right.
He says right, but it's wrong. We experienced five high tides in the absence of somebody going out there and switching that valve over to remote.
That's correct, right. Because the tide was never gonna reach the street level during that weekend.
Guess what?
Because it was.
Tony McConte asked me on March 6th, did we get flooded? No. We didn't get flooded, you know why? Wasn't raining and we didn't have a northeast wind.
Right.
The high tides came between four and six inches from the top of the storm drains.
That's the tide level that was predicted in the tide tables.
Okay. But shouldn't the valve on Wilson been put back into the remote position so that it reacted with the high tide coming in?
No, because it didn't have to, because the tide wasn't gonna be that high.
Come on, Ted.
Basically what it comes down to, I wasn't gonna pay a crew to come in overtime.
Oh, he wasn't gonna pay a crew overtime? This is the problem we had the last time with a major flood over there on a weekend. Okay?
But did it flood, did it flood that weekend?
Once again, it didn't rain and the wind wasn't blowing northeast. So if it rained and the wind was blowing northeast, you would have money for overtime? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying I, I chose not to bring a crew in for overtime to close, to turn that valve back to automatic on the weekend because the tide levels were not gonna exceed.
That was, that was in my, my personal feeling is that was neglect, that that valve did not get switched over to remote until Monday afternoon. We had five high tides.
Right, but how many high tides exceeded the street level, Bruce?
I seen it each and every one at four to six inches.
They exceeded the street level?
It was four to six inches from getting into the street.
They did not exceed the street level. We know that, you know the number as well as I do with the street level.
I'll be honest with you, I didn't check Monmouth, but there's probably a very good chance that Monmouth was underwater. Because you know Brainard's higher, correct?
Yeah, I know, but.
By how much?
Which is higher?
Oh, so, okay, so if I went over to Monmouth, now we're talking three to four inches from the top of the storm drain, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying I know what the level of the.
Well, what I'm saying is that valve should have never, ever been put into the local position and I'll tell you why.
It's okay, you don't have to tell me.
No, I wanna tell everybody else so they know. We had another storm last weekend, correct? The weekend of the 11th and the 12th. Slide gates at the marina were closed. Why did you leave the valve in the remote position, which means it would react with the high tides automatically? Never put it in local. Why?
Because the tide didn't call for that. And if it's gonna rain, when it's raining, it, it'll have to open up and close if, in case they, in case they change the, the pattern they have set at the big floodgate.
Based on what you're saying now, why didn't you think the same thing for the storm on March 3rd?
Well, again, I don't remember, I have to go back and look at what we looked at that time. But I, I'm in touch with the DP before all these storms, that they're gonna close, if they're gonna shut that operation down, I'll leave it in automatic.
Somebody wasn't in touch with somebody when they reopened the slide gate on March 4th. Did they let you know that they were opening the slide gate on March 4th on the morning of?
I, I don't remember at this point.
No, I remember, because chances are they didn't or somebody would have been out there to switch that valve over to remote.
Bruce, if you don't know, you don't remember. You can't assume he's wrong, just, and neither of you remember. That's, that's as long.
Bruce, I'm in contact with the DP.
All right, let's back up a step. Did we get any answers on this flow chart yet?
No, that, that is, shows that the gate was open, what we talked about.
This is going back to December 21st, 22nd and 23rd.
Bruce, you gotta, you start wrapping it up, all right? You're, you're past the five minutes already, but go ahead.
I'd be glad to talk to you after the meeting if you'd like, Bruce.
I'm sorry?
I'll be glad to talk to you after the meeting if you'd like.
Okay. That's basically all I had. But, oh, one other item. There is really no reason Ted to have to touch that valve now because you've already told me it's been repaired. So if it's been repaired and it's working and it's in the remote position, that means it's working automatically. There's no reason to touch it. And the reason I'm saying that is that storm we had on the 11th and 12th, that valve never closed. And you know why it didn't close? Because the slide gates were closed at the marina and if the water ever gets deep enough in Pews Creek, the pump will go on. If the pump goes on, that keeps the valve open at Wilson. It never closed. So my personal feeling is we can leave the valve in the automatic position and let the valve do what it's supposed to do. If we mess with it and we throw it into the local position, that means that somebody needs to be responsive enough to go back and switch it over to remote. But that didn't happen. It went for five high tides. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bruce. Any other member? Don, come on down.
Good evening, my name's Don Watson, living at 1 Collinson Drive. Couple of questions here. See a resolution where we're gonna buy more benches for this room?
Yes.
You know where they're gonna go?
Kind of where it seems like they should.
Okay, and they're like 10 grand a piece? That's what the resolution.
Yes.
Says we're spending 20 grand for two benches. Okay? All right, another thing is, years ago, before I started video recording these meetings, the Township Committee swore up and down that they would never record these meetings. Just want that for the record. Actually, we're doing so right now. And people even said if, even if it cost the taxpayers 10 cents, they would never record these meetings.
Well, turn around and smile, Don. There you go.
I see we're, we're.
You're on Candid Camera.
Township Camera. Anyway, we're, we're purchasing a TV studio lighting in a control room?
It's actually not, it, it, there, when we built this and designed this building, there was a specific room that we had made for.